Good afternoon. It is Monday, March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, five oh one P M. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board Selectment Meeting. Uh, we will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. Uh, we will be going into executive session for the following reason. Master General of Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares, and I do. Excel Recycling LLC versus Town or Free Town. Um, I'll note that Attorney Pucci will be calling into this meeting because he's not feeling well. Um, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session. Yeah, just give me, I'll second it, give me the motion. Motion made?
Motion made.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
Selectman Grunwald?
Aye.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, we are now in executive session. Ready to go?
Ready.
Alright, uh, we are now elevated executive session and back into open session. Um, today we're gonna start off with Personnel Board, so I'll pass it over to George for Personnel.
We have a few appointments. Uh, the first appointment and the second appointment for Debbie Petty. And, uh, I do have a couple of questions on that. Am I gonna do the best time to bring it up since I'm a short timer?
Yeah, please.
More, more, uh, basically. We were supposed to hire a search company.
So we, what we, the decision we made, we voted on to, we're gonna do an analysis, um, of the town's structure to figure out how a third party come in and.
What does that have to do, town structure has nothing to do with it?
Yeah, so because we might, we were wanting to figure out if a town administrator is even, even makes sense for our town, or should there be some, some other type of administrative kind of leadership position, right?
Okay, we've talked about that in the past, town manager rather than town administrator.
And kind of find, defining what that means. And then from, once we have that information, what makes sense in our town, then we can figure out what the next steps are.
Well, I think that's tiptoeing through the tulips to tell you the truth. Because we had a runaway of what we were supposed to do, and we're not doing it.
So that, we have, do we have the company that?
Yeah, George has met with the company, the, um, he met with Libby from the Collins Group to, that's doing the organizational study for the town.
For the organizational study?
Right.
Yes.
And, but that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about how this whole issue was structured from day one.
Yep.
Which was Debbie was hired for six months interim while we had a search for a new administrator since the last administrator was abruptly let go.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, we hadn't really moved on that.
Yep.
What you're talking about is.
So I think that, you know, after further consideration, it made sense to, to first have the organizational study to figure out what we should actually hire for a long-term position, and then that will drive the.
No, just tiptoeing through the tulips, I'm sorry. We, we had an agreement in writing of what we were supposed to do.
Yeah.
And we didn't do it. We have not done it yet, six months in. The original agreement was six months.
Yep.
And during that six months, we were supposed to do a search. And now six months later, you're telling me that we're gonna try to restructure the whole.
So I mean, I mean, my opinion on it, and what we, you know, agreed to before is it made sense to, to do these things in a certain order. So I mean, regardless, right?
That's absolutely not true.
Okay, we can look at the minutes of these conversations, like this is what we've decided on.
We can look at the minutes from the original agreement.
Yep.
And the original agreement, what it, what it said.
Yeah.
What, what did the original agreement say?
I, when we initial, initially, we had to find someone in short time because we had no, no town administrator. Debbie was brought in to, to fill that role, five-four, we hired Debbie to do that after election candidates. I'd like to point out also that Debbie's done a great job in.
Besides the point, you're, you're money in the water here, okay?
Yeah.
Second to what we're talking about.
So, I mean, George, I guess we recently extended her contract out, right? We voted for that.
We did, because we've been sitting on our, you know what?
Yeah.
For six months, and we haven't done what we were supposed to do.
Yep.
Okay?
I think things, times have changed, things changed between then and now, I mean.
But, but what changed? Nothing changed. That's more be-yes.
I, I think things have changed.
Well, not, not that had anything to do with this.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess, I see what you're saying, George, totally agree. The situation we're in now, right, is that Debbie's contract is extended to six-thirty. So we do need her to be appointed to these positions.
What happens at six-thirty? Because we still have not even begun the search that we agreed to do. And the original agreement, that's in writing, stipulated all of these things.
Okay.
Okay. And we're not two to one today, so I feel very comfortable discussing it.
No, that's, I, I get your point.
Okay, so what are we doing in the next few weeks?
I, will we go on forward the Collins Group study, which will then lead us?
But that's not a search.
That, that will, that will lead to what, from my perspective, right? Why would we do a search for a position that we might not even need? That doesn't make a lot of sense to me, when, when this is a hundred and forty, fifty thousand dollar a year position.
This is a position that we've had for a long time. This was, this position was terminated under very unusual circumstances, let me say.
Okay.
You want me to go into that?
I'm, yeah, fine.
Be careful how far you stray away from the agenda.
Yeah.
I'll just sort of make that.
Well, the reason we're talking about it is that we're, we're extending uh, what we should be doing, but the question is, so what you're telling me today, though, I'll, I'll quit right there. Is that we're gonna basically not do anything about all of the agreements we've had in the past. And we're going in a totally different path, okay?
We don't know the path we're gonna go into yet, but.
Exactly.
The, the Collins Group study will, will provide that path.
The Collins Group study was not meant to study the town administrator. It was meant to study the structure of all the employees.
Which is led by, but regardless, we, we disagree on that, that's fine.
Alright, so. Okay. So, I mean, the reason I bring it up is because we're putting Ms. Petty on a whole bunch of other commissions and what have you. That I personally think that we'd be better served to do it a little bit differently. I think I, unless there's, there was one that had, was time-sensitive.
Yes.
So which one was that?
Well, I think they're all kind of time-sensitive, I, I mean.
One in particular.
So in, I, I was appointed to all of these through March thirteenth, my original contract, track date. My contract was extended to June thirtieth. If I'm not reappointed to these boards, then I, I cannot vote on them. The Health Insurance Advisory Board was the one that, what the committee was, the one that was time-sensitive, but that meeting was today, and I didn't vote. I participated but didn't vote. So, but just know that I cannot vote on any of these, uh, boards if I'm not appointed. Although I have a contract to work through the, through June thirtieth.
Okay. Alright. Well, I just wanted to bring up the fact on how we're doing things, and they were not, we're not doing things that we had agreed to. This is a little bit different. Uh, but since this is my last meeting, I, I will just leave it for you guys to sort out. Okay, so, uh, wanna make a motion to accept that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the, the appointments from the agenda.
We need to read them out.
Okay. The following appointments, Deborah Petty to Tax Increment Financing Board, effective three twenty-eight to six thirty twenty-two. Deborah Petty to Chief Procurement Officer, Ethics Commission, Interim Town Administrator, Economic Development Committee, E M A Public Safety Health Insurance Advisory Committee, Local Emergency Plan and Committee, Community Aggregation Delegate, C Mass Committee, Seripet, uh, Regional Economic Strategy Committee, Bylaw Committee, Seripet Commissioner, Seripet Joint Strategy Committee, Seripet Joint Transportation Building Committee. Uh, all effective three twenty-eight to six thirty twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you, George. So now we'll move on to the regular board selection agenda. So first we have approve the minutes from three seven, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I, I haven't read them, so.
Okay, so we can table that? Do we have, we have to approve the minutes within a certain time period? Do you know?
Three meetings or thirty days, so I can do it on four eleven.
Okay, alright.
Four eleven.
Table that? Alright, now the presentation, um, of, of regarding becoming a member of the Bristol Plymouth Technical High School from Superintendent Dr. Howser Aaron Maglehais.
Was he here?
No.
Not here yet, he was expected around six, so.
Alright, so we'll push that off and, uh, weekly warrants, uh, zero four one, uh, zero five six. Do I have a motion to approve the weekly warrant, warrants?
Number five? Number five, one here? Oh, okay, but with the warrant itself.
You're just approving the numbers that they come, need you to have for available warrants.
So, I don't have to back up for it here, okay. Alright, motion made.
Alright, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
So discussion and vote on the Boy Scouts, uh, request to hold a fishing derby at the town beach on four ten, two thousand and twenty-two?
Motion to approve.
Alright, um, I'll, uh, I'll make that mo, or so you submitted that motion?
Yeah.
Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye. There you guys go. I'm assuming you guys are the Boy Scouts?
Yes.
Alright, we'll have fun with that.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. So, um, vote to close the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrant for submissions, effective three twenty-eight twenty-two. Do I have a motion for that?
Uh, we're hoping, do we have a copy?
Yeah, they're, they're in the packet. Actually, they're not in the packet, are they?
No, it's just for submissions, and then I'll combine them all, and we'll come to the next meeting like they normally do.
Yeah, so.
Motion made.
Alright, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion vote, uh, to approve the agreement between Town or Free Town and Mid-City Scrap Iron and Salvage Co. And this is for Mid-City to remove, um, a bunch of salvage metal from the dump, right?
Mickey from the transfer station is here, so.
Yeah.
Is that what it is, Mickey?
It's, so there's an agreement, if there's any C F Cs inside the container, that what the liability is, that's what the agreement is.
Okay, yeah.
Make us aware of our liability.
Perfect, yeah, let's do that. Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that agreement.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Because discussion vote on the, um, labor material proposal from, uh, B B S Tech for the police station. And Chief, assuming you are here for that one, among other things?
Yeah, so those items were placed before the police subcommittee that voted to proceed with them. Then it made its way up to the administrator, and, uh, I believe you previously have seen the list of items. Many of those things have been taken care of, some things are still outstanding, but essentially lighting up, uh, this, repairing the light, uh, positions on the sign, um, putting up a monitor and dispatch, uh, hooking up electric and cable to the monitor in the break room, putting some keypads outside of two doors.
I think that's the one this is specific to, right?
This is for the, this is for the, so this is for the doors.
That's, that's why you have B B S.
Yeah, okay. Alright, great, and, you know, and any, any other notes on this, you know?
It's for the doors, uh, which is proprietary or sole source, if you will. Um, it's just a sign that quotes so we can get them ordered, and then the second one is for the labor to actually install the doors. It's separate from the electrical contract, which already has been awarded.
Gotcha, okay. So with that, uh, so I'll entertain a motion to, or sorry, um, to approve the materials and labor for the B B S Tech for the police station, so. George, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, uh, discussion of vote to amend the fuel storage license for DevCon Innovation Way LLC to change the address from Zero Innovation Way. Um, plot number two-three-six, lot six-point-zero-two, two-thirty-six Innovation Way, Sonoma Mass, oh-two-seven-oh-two. This is because the assessors gave them actual address now, so it's just a trans, uh, an amendment to the already assigned, um, license. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendment.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion on the transfer station hours, so it looks like we were able to come to some, a new agreement on, uh, when we can have the transfer station open the weekends, uh, starting in, you know, seasonally. So, um, the new hours will be Tuesday, eight A M. to six P M. Wednesday through Friday, eight A M. to four P M. Saturday, eight A M. to six P M. and Sunday from, how about eight, should we start in March or April? Does anyone, April might make more sense, people are cleaning up their yard.
I would think April.
April, so we'll do April through October, um, eight A M. to twelve P M. for Sunday. So we do have to, we will have to hire an additional staff person for this. Um, so, I don't know, any questions from?
Yeah, we, we need more staff.
Um, I thought we were gonna stop those Sunday hours in July, that was my understanding, not in April. We're gonna work the Tuesday, Saturday from now till we get to next, till July, correct?
Yeah, let me think about this.
Okay. Well, it's because we don't have the funding, right, to add new staff right now until the next budget.
Yeah, so exactly, so, so that will be for, I guess, next, next April, it will start, it will start this July, right?
Yes, this July.
This July, next April.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
So, in total, this, you're going to be open more hours now, is that right?
Um, not more, just extended on the Tuesday and Saturday, for anybody that goes need to come in. That feels slighted by the Sunday closure.
And you're closing early on Sunday.
Yes, currently it's not open at all on Sunday.
Right.
So we will now be open, uh, on Sunday as well.
In July.
In July, going from this year, after that, it's gonna start in April, so this is mostly for the fall cleanup. You know, or sorry, spring cleanup, people wanna do, we'll give them an extra day so they can do that. That seems to be the highest demand from what we've heard.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve this new hours?
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's that? Hello, yeah, so we did skip over you, we'll come back to you now, if that works for you. Yeah, do I need a sec, any technology kind of requirements here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump down to Agenda Item fifteen. So this is the, uh, while they get ready, so this is the discussion to vote, um, on the host community agreement between Town or Free Town and Green Collar Cannabis. So is there anyone from Green Collar wanna speak on this? I mean.
Uh, yeah, I, I was trying to play something, I went back and forth, uh, through the town council to arrive upon an actually agreed document. Uh, my clients are good with the text that was drafted, so other than that, nothing to add.
I, I reviewed it, looks very fair, um, look forward to you guys operating in town. Uh, George, you have any questions?
No.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, host community agreement with Green Collar Cannabis.
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Easy peasy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. What's that?
You know what else, can you do, um, sixteen and maybe seventeen, in case we lose people?
Yeah, alright, so I'm gonna move on to Agenda Item sixteen, um, vote and approve the fire station boiler replacement bid. So that is for me on page sixty-six. So, um, we got three bids in, the lowest bid came from, uh, Performance Plumbing and Heating at twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. I am allowed to say that, right? Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve, um, the boiler bid with Performance Plumbing and Heating for the fire station boiler replacement.
Motion made.
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then seventeen is just approving the contract.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract between the Town or Free Town and Performance Plumbing and Heating. Have a motion for that, this is the file. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright.
And sure, but the one thing that, the other thing I have to have done is thirteen, just, uh, insurance rates.
Okay. Yep, so, that is on. I, yeah.
I, uh, thirteen, so.
So this is, I'll just, I'll, so this vote on the health insurance rates for fiscal two thousand and twenty-three, Debbie, you wanna explain anything?
Yeah, so, um, every year, the Maya or whoever we put the, um, he- health insurance bid to, they give us the renewal rates for the health insurance for the employees of the town for which the town pays seventy-five percent on, uh, and the employees pay twenty-five percent on most of it. So it can be a little different on the P P O.
Mm-hmm.
The rates went up two-point-seven-six percent. Um, the Health Insurance Advisory Committee looked at different alternatives and voted, uh, to recommend that the selectmen can keep the same, um, health insurance plan options with the increase of two-point-seven-six percent, so the rates would be, uh, under the H M L Blue, which is our H M O plan, for an individual plan will be nine hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-three cents. For a family plan, two thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-nine cents, and those are per month. And for the P P O plan, which is our Blue Care Elect Preferred, for an individual plan, it would be one thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-six cents per month. And for a family plan, three thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety cents per month. So I need an approval from the Board of Selectmen to move forward with that.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve those rates as stated.
Motion made.
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so like, don't let me forget about fourteen, I skipped that one.
We, we skipped twelve too.
Twelve, okay, well, that's on my, the previous page, so.
Yeah, I'll just make a note.
Alright. So are the folks from B P ready to go?
Well, first, good evening, uh, thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alex Maglehay, Superintendent and Bristol Plymouth, also a resident of Free Town. So it's good to be here at a primitive place, so it was over town. Um, my understanding is you want to know more about where we are, um, as far as, uh, student, uh, Free Town students, as well as where our project is, so I think I'm gonna start off with just, with a project. See where we are with the project and when it's gonna be completed, and then, uh, we can go forward with the, uh, you know, Free Town students as, uh, members of the Bristol Plymouth District, we will do that. And if there's any, of course, we'll just answer questions.
Great, yeah, and I, I'd just like to note, so we do have a public hearing scheduled at seven, so, you know, I'm sure there's some questions here, so we just have to make sure we have, keep it limited, so we can have the public hearing at seven.
Sure.
Thank you.
Alright, um, so we begin with, uh, with me is Chad, currently he's from, uh, he's our O P M, uh, owner, supervisor manager, and our architect, you know, Steph Sinzlosky, at the Architect, we'll be going over the, uh, PowerPoint as well. Uh, let's just begin with, uh, I, I guess I'll take over the first couple of slides.
Sure.
So, um, we've been with this project, this project actually started in, um, twenty eighteen. Uh, in twenty eighteen, we got, uh, accepted into the pipeline of the M S D A. Uh, the, the school that we're in now is, uh, it was built in nineteen seventy, there's, there's been some, uh, challenges in, in, as we've grown, uh, it started off with a school that was about seven hundred students, and now has thirteen hundred. And, uh, and it's also, um, the way it was built, it doesn't really meet a lot of the, uh, educational needs that, uh, required by the, um, Department of Ed. So in two thousand and nineteen, um, we've got our project manager, which is a P M A, Chad. And then we went through the architects in two thousand and twenty, uh, we found the architect, we did what we called a feasibility, what would it cost? We did, uh, quite a few plans, you know, could have been an addition, a renovation, uh, all the way through, and then went to new school. And we took all the, those studies and see what worked with our educational plan. In, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, we came up with a schematic plan, which is kind of right here, I know it's part of, uh, folks back there probably can't see it, but you're welcome to come down and take a look at it. Also, it's on our website, and then, um, just recently, uh, we, you know, uh, we got approved to move forward with the project by going through all the towns and the elections and so forth, and I got, I think I approved on March fifth, twenty, twenty, uh, twenty-second. And these are the feasibility study overs, and I'm gonna pass it on to Tina.
So like the superintendent said, we had multiple options to try to figure out what was the best option for Bristol Plymouth. Um, we had a base repair, which was, you know, many, many millions of dollars just to bring it up to code, basically. And then we looked at, um, a new addition, renovations, you know, it's difficult to renovate a school with vocational programs because it's hard to find, uh, swing space for those programs. So, um, we did look at some of those, the construction timeline was like five years on them, because you have to move kids around as you renovated spaces. And then we ultimately ended with the, um, new option being the most cost-effective and the best educationally. We also looked at multiple different kinds of populations, um, our current population of thirteen hundred, all the way up to fifteen forty, and we ended up being somewhere in the middle. Uh, we didn't wanna build the school too big, it's already a big price tag for everybody, so the more kids you add into it, the bigger the school you need. Um, and we looked at a lot of different locations on the existing site. So we had a, a whole bunch of goals for the project that the educators had set up and the administration, and we used those goals to kind of weigh the pros and cons of each of those options that we developed. And that's how we came up to the point where we wanted to do the new addition, or the new, the new construction. Um, some of the visions for the new school was to create a student-specific space, a hub, that's their library and their caf, kind of the central heart of the school. Um, they wanted to create vocational clusters, so leg programs would be located together in the building. They wanted connections between the educational and the vocational spaces, the students really learn by doing, so if they could understand the connection between their academic programs and what they're learning in their shops, then the program would be much more successful. Um, we, of course, wanted to increase sizes, one of the major problems with the school right now is that it's out of space, they just need more space. Um, we wanted to encourage the community engagement, so all the public-facing, uh, vocational programs like culinary and cosmetology would be really be welcoming and easy to find. And we wanted to create natural light in all the spaces, right now, a lot of the classroom space is in the middle of the school. They sort of backfill courtyards to gain space, um, and so none of those classrooms have natural light. So in the new school, all the classrooms will have natural light. Um, we wanted to make sure that we had enough space for spread programs and small group for pull-out and an auditorium for, um, distance learning and also for gathering the whole school. Currently, there isn't an auditorium, um, in the school. And then we wanted to make sure that the gym was right-sized for wellness programs. Um, the new building allows us to have an improved layout, so we're gonna be able to, uh, match up the academic spaces with the vocational clusters like I've talked about, and also have all of the hub spaces sort of in the central location of the school. So the auditorium, the gym, the caf, the library, all centrally located. Um, these are some of the clusters that I keep mentioning, um, there's a service cluster, a business cluster, um, manufacturing and engineering, construction, transportation, and health. And so again, it's easier to kind of zone the school now that it's gonna be all new. We'll have public spaces that people can come and use after hours, and we'll be able to lock down all of the academic spaces in the school. So the way we come up with the size of the school and what kind of spaces are in it is based on two things. So the way we come up with the size of the school and what kind of spaces are in it is based on two things. The MSBA program, which looks like this spreadsheet here, um they basically put this together, and you type in the number of students that you have, and it kind of spits out a program of, you need X number of classrooms, you need X number of science labs, and it gives you square footages for those. So they do this because they wanna have all of their schools across the district be equally sized, everybody has equity. Um, and then for vocational programs, we also look at the DESE, and they tell us the minimum sizes that you need to have for vocational spaces. And together with that and meeting with the educators, we figure out how to right-size the shops. Um, it's going to be a very sustainable and resilient new building. Um, we are doing um the lead accreditation, and um some of the things that we're looking at is under energy, reducing the energy use, we'll do that through LED lighting, we'll make sure that we have a super-efficient envelope, um and we're looking at clean and green energy sources um for the building right now, and we'll also have EV charging stations for cars and hopefully buses at some point. Um, we're looking at health and well-being, so the new school will have uh positive I, indoor air quality and acoustics. Right now, the acoustics from space to space are really poor, but in the new building, it'll be, you know, much better. Um, thermal comfort and control, you'll be able to kind of uh make sure that your space is the right temperature for you. Access to light and views like I was talking about, there'll be windows in all the educational spaces, and we're gonna make sure that we're using healthy materials in the building, so we're looking to get rid of red, redless materials and chemicals. Um, we're gonna be reducing water consumption and managing the stormwater in the site. Some of you may know the site is pretty wet, has a lot of wetlands. Um, we are looking at ways to reuse rainwater um on-site for irrigation potentially, and also for things like toilet flushing. Um, and then in terms of waste, construction waste will obviously try to minimize, and then we'll work with the district to um recycle and compost. So this is a shot of the new building, it's going to be built on what is the football field currently. And in the foreground, those fields that you're seeing, that's where the existing building is today. So that building will stay in place when we build this new facility, and then as a second phase of construction, we'll demo that, demo that, and then put in the new fields. The parking and all of the outbuildings in front of those are all existing, and we're gonna try to maintain those as much as possible to save money. Um, this is sort of the site plan layout. You can see that the new football field is gonna get built along uh Route twenty-four at the bottom of the site, and then we'll be putting in those new fields, um as I talked about. There's also gonna be the um two site access that we have currently, so that'll be maintained. And we are working right now with our traffic engineers to really look at how traffic works on the site today and the best way to move people through. Um, so these are the floor plans, there's two floors. Um, the color coding has to do with those clusters that I was talking about. Um, the orange are the academic classrooms and science labs, the yellow is the hub space. Uh, so that has the auditorium and the caf, um and the media center upstairs. Green is administrative spaces, um purple are the public-facing uh shops, so that'll be culinary, cosmetology, graphics, and um early childhood. And then the blue at the back of the site is automotive and construction, they all have workyards that open up to sort of the forested area on the site, so they'll have a nice fenced-in area to be doing their stuff outside, and also kind of keep all of their gear and stuff, and it'll be all neat and tucked away. Um, the blue in the front are the um CAD CAM robotics and engineering and the whole fat. Um, we built it on two floors to really conserve the site, but also to reduce the cost, so it makes uh the foundations less expensive, um and the roof area less expensive, if you can get more things on two floors. Um, on the upper level, the yellow is the gymnasium, and the upper level of the auditorium and the media center. Um, and then we have sort of the business cluster uh in the lower left-hand corner, and then in the front corner, we have the health cluster. And again, the orange is the academic spaces. All of those are kind of ringed around a courtyard, um and that will have outdoor educational space. I think one of the things we learned during the pandemic is outdoor education space is really great to have, so we're planning for that in a secure location. So this is kind of a zoomed-in view of the axon of the building. It is huge, it's about twice the size of the existing building, so we're working on ways to make it more um scaled on the site, so as a pedestrian, you have a good experience when you're walking around the building. It doesn't feel like it's, you know, quite as big as it is. Um, we are doing some studies of materials, um and we've just started this, we have another about fifteen months of design, so we are looking at um very durable, inexpensive materials like masonry and stone for the building, that will last more than fifty years. I think right now we have the interior walkthrough, again, this is just very um preliminary because it's the study phase. This has you coming in the main entrance, um you're looking out, you can see the courtyard to your right. There's a conference room, a think tank there, and we walk into the cafeteria, which is open, a lot of natural light from up above. And we have acoustic baffles up on the ceiling to provide that nice acoustic quality, and if you go up to the main, up the main stair to the second floor, it takes you up to the gym. So the gym still feels really public even though it's on the second floor. And all of that space is really easy to lock down from all the academic areas. Um, so the school can be open in the evenings for athletic events or events in the auditorium, and the public can use the school as well. And that's looking out to a roof deck um off of the cafeteria. Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah. This is supposed to be an exterior walkthrough, we'll see if it works. So again, this is still pretty schematic level, just really, at the point we did this, we were looking at different materials and getting a good cost estimate for those materials, but the design is gonna have another twelve months to fifteen months of refinement. So that's showing the main entrance, with an area for parent drop-off and bus drop-off, showing the brick facade. The orange is the brick in this case. And then that's the public-facing um spaces that I was talking about, so culinary, cosmetology, the pre-K center, you can see the um playground on the right, the bottom right-hand side. All of that will have visitor parking in front of it and really clear signage, so when you come on the street, or you come from the um Route one forty onto the site, you'll see these public-facing um shops right when you get there, so you know, you'll know where you're heading. One of the things about the existing school, you kind of come in from the back of the school, you see the loading dock, you don't really know where you're going, if you're looking for the restaurant or the, or the cosmetology. So yeah. I think, might jump over to Todd and then talk a little bit about cost.
Great, thank you. Um, so okay, let's talk a bit about cost and uh the MSBA grant program that this project's undertaking. Um, so, so over that submission, the feasibility study to the MSBA, there are three submissions. Uh, cost has al- always been number one, continues to be at the forefront of the building committee's agenda. Um, so the, the final approved by the Massachusetts School Building Authority cost is three hundred and five million dollars. Uh, that's down from three hundred and twenty-five million of preliminary design. Uh, we hope that as we continue to find the design, we can find opportunities for savings as we move through the process. Uh, the district share of that three hundred and five million dollars is a hundred and eighty million dollars, so the MSBA reimbursement projection is a hundred and twenty-five million dollars coming from the state. Uh, the state is funded by one percent of a six percent sales tax, goes in a fund, and then a state agency determines which communities will be eligible to receive those funds. Uh, so looking at a comparison across the options, uh so if we focus on what that district share of each of the scenarios would be, uh you can see on the far left, if we were to repair the existing building, we're looking at a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. Uh, so that existing building's around two hundred thousand square feet, it's half the size of the proposed new building. Um, as Superintendent Magalhaz had stated earlier, it was designed for enrollment of around seven hundred students. Uh, so it really didn't fit the educational programming needs. Uh, we also studied the addition renovation option, so this is the most cost-effective of the multiple apprehensives that are slowly. Uh, where this becomes challenging is the vocational nature, so you need to find a place to temporarily house these vocational shops. It's a lot more than just putting a classroom in modular trailer, we're talking about recreating culinary kitchens and onboard shops and much more involved programs. Uh, so that has a cost component too, which unfortunately is not eligible for reimbursement under the MSBA program. Uh, so the new build option is the one that we went with, we have the MSBA's full support, estimated district share of a hundred and eighty million dollars. Uh, so that is split amongst the member communities based on enrollment. The way the original agreement is currently structured, uh the, the school would bond the, their share over thirty years. And then each year, the principal and interest payments for the bonds are divided up amongst the member communities based on enrollment that each community has in the school that year. Uh, so the hypothetical that you see right here has Free Town, uh assuming you're five percent of the school's population. Um, so the design enrollments, one thousand four hundred and thirty-four students, so you'd be five percent of that, roughly seventy students, seventy-something students. Uh, at that hypothetical assumption, you're looking at a Free Town share over those thirty years of nine and a half million dollars. Uh, looking where we are compared to other similar projects, so there are four very large vocational projects in the MSBA's pipeline with Bristol Plymouth. Uh, you can see on the screen there, so cost per square foot, Bristol Plymouth is the lowest cost per square foot. Um, there are other projects that are in the process of being invited into the program, one of them is actually Old Colony in Rochester. So they are right now where Bristol Plymouth was oh, around three years ago, in the MSBA's process. So they'll be going through a similar effort during that period. Uh, one of the items that we do for the MSBA and for the district's financial advisors, in order to figure out the ideal bonding scenario, is we take the product schedule and we map it out over time. And we look at not only what can, might be expended in any given month, but we look at what the state will reimburse, as the state reimburses on a month-month basis. So every month, we submit all the invoices for that month, we go to the state's audit department, the state cuts a reimbursement check. Uh, so what this does is allows us to um to maximize the, the bonding efficiency, if you will. Uh, we do not need to bond the full three hundred and five million dollar total project cost, the district owns the bond, their share, in order to keep the project moving forward month-to-month. Uh, tax impact projection, so um again, this is using that same assumption where roughly five percent of the students uh are Free Town students. And you can see Free Town, the uh third row down. And uh for the twenty twenty-one average single-family home with an assessed value of three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, uh your rate impacts estimated at thirty-five cents per thousand. Um, that translates to uh an estimated quarterly impact of thirty-one dollars and forty-eight cents on the average single-family house in Free Town. Annual impact is a hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-one cents. So that's uh what the impact would look like of this, this project. Um, with that, turning back over to Dr. Magalhaz.
So that's where we are with the uh, the new project, and now um the assessment, assessment, the full assessment wouldn't start till uh twenty twenty-five, like my business manager may be rose up, up this and down. So that assessment would come in. Now, as far as, I guess the other question they asked me to speak to is about the regional agreement. Uh, right now, uh as we, we just met um this past Thursday, and we are updating, um basically what we're trying to do is with, with DESI and the legal department, is clarifying some of the language of the old language, in fact, I have, I brought with me, um, I actually have three, so if you really wanna make copies, but I have the original agreement with our uh districts, and in fact, you guys didn't want to hear, but then I think you, in some ways, kind of, but it's there, so with, with DESI, we're just trying to clean it up, uh updated with the um the new uh laws that may have changed from nineteen seventy, and also the, the biggest part is clarification. We wanna make sure that when it's being read, that my understanding is the same understanding as someone else, so we keep going back and forth. I was uh hoping that we had this uh document completed last, last month, we had our uh school committee meeting, so that I can bring it to them. So uh, it wasn't done, I'm so hopeful that it'll be completed, and so the next step will be is that, once it's um it's approved by DESI and the language is approved by the legal department, I'll bring it to the school committee. Uh, as you know, the school committee has um, two years in a row, has um agreed to bring in uh Free Town students as non-residents, uh which is, I think, is the first time we've ever done that, because uh we do have a waitlist with other residents, but knowing that uh, you know, a lot was sent for um working out a, to come into our district. So the next step will be, once they um, they approve it, that regional agreement, it'll now go to all the towns to also uh agree, including Free Town, the town of Free Town, will also get that new uh regional agreement, and then it gets voted amongst all the towns, is uh including uh the city of Time, and uh has to be uh unanimous, all has to be, everyone has to agree uh to, in order to be uh a member of the uh Bristol Plymouth Regional Technical School District. So once that's completed, uh we can still allow students to come in um to our district, as any other uh, the way they're doing it now, and you'd be uh assess the, very similar to what you're being assessed now, depending on what the tuition is, and that's usually guided by Department of Ed, uh the tuition rate. Uh, as well as, so once that's completed, um you, you, it wouldn't take, uh, it goes through the process, uh it'll take effect July first of twenty twenty-three, where then you would be a school committee member approved by you to be on, on the board, so we're still looking at that time period as, as far as I'm aware. Um, but unfortunately, I wish I had more, better, you know, news regarding the uh regional uh agreement, but I'm still waiting. Any questions?
I have a question, so it looks like Free Town has, you know, in its projections, five percent um of the total population of the school, right, of enrollment? Is that number um a, you know, is that based on the population of each town? Or, you know, how does that number get uh assessed?
Well, the, the, the percentage will, will change every year.
Just, it's, so, okay, so it's, it's not like you have to, five percent are gonna be allocated to Free Town?
No, no, there's, there's uh, our regional agreement, you, you have it, we don't have a um, a quota.
Okay.
Town, it's basically, we take all the applications that come in, uh and then we just, you know, the, the department that looks at the applications and admissions and do the interviews and so forth, they do their thing and they just pick, we don't know what towns, you know, we, we try not to uh look at that. Uh, the reason why you guys have a quota is because, you know, you know, we do have folks that um, uh, you know, from other towns that are not coming in, and so we, the school committee decided they just wanted to give you just enough to, you know, I know you went through a year without having a vocational, you know, uh experience. So um, you know, they settled fifteen students because we didn't want to strip too much of the others that probably have to make it, so. Um, you have, or otherwise, you don't get the quota.
Okay, thank you.
So with the long-range plan, be that we take our students out of Old Colony and go up here?
Well, I, I, I think by that, this sets up, you won't have any more students, so you don't have any students from Old Colony anywhere right now.
Oh, we don't?
No. We do, they're graduating, but they have, there's no new freshmen starting.
Right, no freshman, no sophomores.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, or no juniors either, because we got the freshmen and sophomores.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm just sharing with them what their Connor enrollment is, because we're still in that transition phase.
Right, right. There's a, they only have seniors there? At this point?
Junior's and seniors.
Twenty-one. I thought they had a year that they didn't have anybody go in yet.
So it's our sophomore class right now, so what I, Mr. Matthews, by May, to Mrs. May, just to, just to speak to it, because it goes beyond kind of his jurisdiction, coming to the PP, so I just wanted to give you the kind of big picture. It would also answer your question relative to, can we, you know, what's that five percent look like?
Yeah.
Look historically at vocational needs for Free Town residents, this is what this diagram shows, that you have a small percentage of students that historically are going to Bristol Agricultural High School, that will still be in effect. You and twenty-three other communities will continue to have that option for those students. It's always typically a smaller percentage historically, even though they just went through, as you know, a new construction project, and it has, for, just see the numbers there reflected across the board. You see Old Colony still listed there, because we're in the process of phasing out those last two classes. So you can see the junior and seniors, who's managed, but by the time this construction project starts, all of the Free Town residents, if they choose a vocational option, would be attending Bristol Plymouth and or Bristol Agricultural. And just to answer, Mr. Matthews, your question, uh to Mrs. May, is if you think of that five percent piece, that was also comparable to Rehoboth's numbers, it's pretty consistent with about what the vocational needs have been for Free Town students.
Okay.
Typically between seventy and eighty students have been quote "locational students." Whether it had been in Old Colony at one point, and Bristol, it will now be Bristol Plymouth if this goes through. It will become the eighth, when I say we, I'm saying we collectively, the town of Free Town, will be the eighth city indoor town to join the district. They have made that accommodation for these past two years to allow for non-resident, um, you know, students to attend as we make this transition, and then we'd be formal if the votes go through, so I just wanted to share those numbers. So I just wanted to share those numbers with you, because it does kind of capture that question.
Yeah, absolutely.
You can, when I would simply say, you can imagine that that twenty and twenty-five under where it says Old Colony being BP students in the future. Right, that's that's typically what the number, for example, this year, my glass, we don't mind, we had thirty-eight, thirty-six applicants. Thirty-six Freetown students applying, doesn't mean they've all, they're all gonna be selected and or choose. In some instances, families are keeping open their options, are looking at Bristol Aggie, may end up at a ponit with historically twenty to twenty-five students. Thus, you kind of have that five percent and maybe a few more students, and then you'd be assessed based on that number of students moving forward.
So you, yeah, that, so your, the assessment is based on, it's a function of the number of students, so it's so it's gonna fluctuate every year? Okay, that's that, that's what I was, I want to make sure it's a variable cost and not like a fixed cost there.
And I think the confidence you can have, Mr. Matthews, is that if you look historically at the need, you kind of, you obviously can't ever predict exactly how many students.
Yeah.
But you can look at a pretty, pretty large piece to see how many students attended Old Colony in Bristol Aggie, and now that will be in Bristol Plymouth.
Yeah, that thing's probably important note, so I know Old Colony is a pretty old school itself, so I'm sure they're gonna have to do something similar to this.
They're in the pipeline, yeah, the where I study, it takes a while, you know, I almost, you know, but like I said, we're um, we we got on the list in uh twenty eighteen in November, in twenty nineteen, that's when it it started. It takes over a year to get, you know, all the documentation out to Department of Ed, and then things have to be approved, so it takes a while, and and you have to get your architects involved, and then, you know, you have to, it 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 takes a little while, it takes another, probably another four or five years before they're where we are today.
Yeah, you're you're standing in a in a building we just built, so.
Right, so it takes a while, you know, when you're working with the, you know, Department of Ed and then MSBA.
Yeah.
They they did, they really want to um make sure they, you know, everything's checked off, and uh and so, you know, that we're doing our homework and, you know, we're shopping a pencil as well, so um it's kind of where we are with the regional agreement. But but that number was arbitrary number, we kind of used that number as a, you know, I kind of see Freetown Berkeley type of deal.
Yeah. I can see that, anyone have any questions? Yeah, sure.
I just have two questions, thank you so much for your presentation. Um first off, the the assessment and the presentation that you presented today, I'm assuming that went to the other seven member towns. Is it the same exact presentation, or did you adjust it for Freetown's numbers for this specific presentation?
This 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 one in particular?
Yes.
This one we adjusted for you, for this, because we didn't have Freetown there.
Correct, I just wanted to make sure that the other towns weren't voting on the assumption that Freetown was.
No, no, we threw this in there so that you are able to see what it looks like for your purpose. But when we, uh when we went through this process with the other towns, Freetown was never mentioned, because I couldn't, I couldn't mention it, because honestly, I still can't, because you're not approved, you know.
Yeah.
And if, you know, if you want to be approved, you know, you're gonna have to do your homework too, you're gonna have to, you know, hopefully uh reach out to other communities and and so forth. Uh I would think that uh being in a project like this, you have a better chance of coming in, because, you know, they may want to need some help to uh support the building. And that is what I'm, you know, I'm guessing, but uh but other than that, it's a.
Yeah, through through the chair, I just want to publicly thank you, Alex, because you've been phenomenal throughout this entire process. Um from the moment we reached out to you and everything happened with Old Colony to now, um so just publicly thank you. And I think it's also worth noting that while we are sending kids to Bristol Plymouth on a tuition basis, through our research, it it was found that it's Freetown actually saving money in that respect, it is cheaper to send our kids to Bristol Plymouth than it is to Old Colony.
Yeah.
Uh and they also offer seven more shops, so um watching this presentation, I'm I'm so excited um for the the prospect of Freetown being able to um get on board with with BP. Um but just uh and and lean on us too when it comes to this point, but we're gonna have to get out and educate folks and and get the word out there and really sell this to the community.
Yeah.
Um because it is important, so that's that's all I have, but but I just wanted to thank Alex publicly, because as a town resident, he knows the kids that he's getting from Freetown, um how awesome they are. Um so just wanted to thank him.
Yeah.
Thank you, um I was also on the school committee as well, so.
Yeah.
Um but I mean, the difference, picking back on on tuition, uh we actually were looking, I don't know if you you were gonna have to ask that question, but Dean Rose has uh exact numbers, what would cost you going there versus come here, do you have those numbers for the person?
So the non-resident right now, tuition rates, um Old Colony is currently at eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy-nine per student. And Bristol Plymouth's at fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-one per student. So that's what we're currently billing those fifteen students at.
Does that include transportation?
That does not.
Okay, because I I know that's another pretty expensive.
In either instance, it would not.
It would not, okay, those are.
That it'd be an added cost regardless of what vocational option.
Good to know.
I have a non, hi, I have a non-money question. You know, I can't stand the exit from the campus, and we tried to get you a traffic.
I know.
Didn't work, didn't even work. Are we, when we focus on this new footprint and everything, gonna be able to siphon kids so they go another way, rather than zooming out to one forty, ninety to nothing?
Well, if you stop me, Paul, I did write a letter to the governor.
I saw that.
A driveway with the Mazo Boulevard, the lights are so they don't.
But we're changing those lights.
Oh, okay, I didn't, maybe that's why I didn't send it back, I never got an answer. But um, but yeah, we're we're we're, they're doing the study now, um it is.
Traffic study, right?
Traffic study, and and unfortunately, I don't even know what's going on, there's a lot of, you know, it may be easier now to move, because I I did put more ramps.
We are, the new F ramp goes into the station there, and one forty's gonna be a little bit widened there.
Yeah.
Um and all the the lights are going to be adaptive signaling, so when there's queuing, supposedly, they know what they're doing, which is why I wanted a light there.
Yeah, that's right.
But um, we'll still work that. I just, for for the purpose of everyone's information here, when the kids get out, I don't remember what time it is, but it's mid-afternoon. They get right there at the intersection at one forty across from Home Depot, and it's a challenge for them to exit the campus. It's a huge challenge, and they're young and they get impatient, and there are an awful lot of near misses there. So I know you're looking at this, because you also siphon them the other way.
Yeah, we do, we try to siphon them, and we try to tell them, always take a right, don't take a left, because you're gonna go two lanes.
So I just want people to be aware that with a new station there, and with additional development, because that whole parcel where the station is, now they're looking at a whole kind of mixed-use residential area. There's gonna be a lot more traffic.
Yeah, yeah, that's worth it.
That's just FYI, I think we should have a chat, but I think that, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's going to be happening in that general area that will impact traffic flows, traffic counts, and peak period impacts.
If anybody still remembers the old one forty, you know, it was the Walden's.
I remember.
So it was much easier to know, but now that, that's all that.
I like that.
Well, I just have one quick question, and then I think just a quick uh opinion base as well. So so Alex, is there anything that you could forward on this presentation first, immediately?
Again, these numbers, you know, again, they're.
Preliminary.
Right, yeah, I I, you know, the the bonds personally, they did it, they, again, they gave us a certain rate change, you know, um sure, I'd be happy to.
But it gives us the overall project cost, and those numbers are also important data.
Yeah, and my second thing, just regarding uh transportation, I I'd argue that we we might be some savings there in in transportation as well.
Yeah.
Just given where BP is and where Freetown's situated.
Mm-hmm.
Um probably a lot cheaper to get our kids to BP than it is all the way across town to.
No, that makes sense.
Old Colony, so there's something to think about as well.
Saying, which is support that, I can tell you for a fact that that is correct, because we're currently transporting.
Yeah.
That those remain, that remaining group, and there is the cost savings because of the location.
Yeah, I I just remember it being a second point that, you know, we'd have to pay the transportation for the year based on the number of kids that started the school year for uh for Old Colony. And a lot of those would end up knocking the shop they wanted, going back to a ponit, and we had to continue paying for that transportation costs. You know, and so it's just one thing that always stood out to me, it's, you know, hopefully that can be avoided in the future somehow.
Just an added incentive as well.
Yeah.
We've been very fortunate for the last over twenty years now, that we've uh we've come to net school spending, only when we only assess net school spending, so we've never gone above uh net school spending, and we don't come to the district and ask for more, we ask, you know, whatever the state has given us. That's what we go with, and uh therefore, there were really not much to really speak to, because I'm not asking for additional assessment.
Got you. All right, any other questions?
If you don't mind, I'll leave, I'll leave this here, and if anybody wants, I'll leave some of the brochures, the shops and things that we have, and if, you know, I'll leave them all here, if you want to spread out the town, so you can get the word out.
So the brochures give you the list of the shops?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think people will be interested in that.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, just leave them there, and then people can grab them, and, yeah, anywhere.
Scrabble, it's not, it's not be happy to associate through, spending any information for the community through this, whether it be course, any percentage numbers, and then just to transport it, so my parents are talking. I mean, I think the critical piece is gonna be collectively, there's only so much for educational funding.
Yes.
And I think the superintendent, Freetown Lakeville, is gonna have to work with those vocational schools for the limited resources that exists for the town, and we understand that.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a whole critical thing, you've always paid a vocational dollar amount, you've always paid for transportation, but now adding that capital piece, that's gonna have to be a consideration given. That would be a consideration given, no matter where they went.
Yeah.
Certainly something that the town's gonna have to and and gain support from, we're told, so.
Absolutely, yeah, totally agree, thank you. All right, moving on, let's make sure I don't skip anything here. All right, agenda item twelve, so this is discussion and vote on auctioning the property at one oh six North Main Street.
So this was a uh originally taken for tax title.
Yes.
And it went up for auction and was auctioned off, and then um it didn't go forward to uh closing. So I just wanted to bring it back to the board, I did send an email to all the department heads, uh maybe one of us, and said, does anybody have any need for this property? Uh because we'd like to, you know, we're not in the business of owning properties, we we wanna get rid of this, uh but I wanted to just make sure with the board that you're, you still wanna auction it off.
Yeah, this is the one down almost in Berkeley, that kind of goes all the way up to twenty-four.
With the shed, right, right, yeah. So I just want to make sure that there was no reason to not auction it off at this point.
I can't think of a good reason, George, what do you think?
Oh, it would be nice, it's a nice piece of property, but you know, being at the very.
Tippy end of town, yeah. Yeah, so I think we should probably try to auction it again. Um was, so last time, just no one sort of bid on it?
Somebody did bid on it, they did go on to purchase and sale agreement, and then they backed down, I think we might have been, when we had to.
We came out of the DNS.
I remember that now.
And uh but the problem with that was uh the property was not properly described.
Yeah.
And there were a lot of issues with the property, with the buyer, came aware, wanted to back out.
Yeah, that's right.
So uh the house itself, from what I'm told, is a disaster. And then there's issues with the land itself, because of a gas pipeline coming through. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, but that's what I've been told. So I I think it behooves us to do a good analysis, and so people can bid on it accordingly.
Yeah.
I agree, I I I mean, there are the attorneys involved with this, and we'll make sure all the easements and whatnot are depicted correctly.
Yeah.
Um I don't know when the auction will take place, I just want to make sure there wasn't anything, any reason not to auction it off at this point.
Yeah, I can't think of any, and so.
I mean, the only thing I would say, uh we have no need for that land now, but looking ahead ten, twenty years or whatever. Would that be something that would be beneficial to the towns, if that's the case? Holding on to it won't be that big of a deal.
No, it is a six-acre parcel, I mean, it is sizable.
It'd be perfect for a billboard, because the contract's twenty-four, but hopefully you want those in town.
I don't know.
You can you can say no for right now, I I I mean, I just, that's why I'm asking, I don't want to, we can all move forward. I don't.
I mean, I wouldn't want to rush into it, since, you know, we haven't really discussed it, and uh maybe didn't hold on to.
I mean, I could push this, I could push this to the, yeah, the next board, no problem.
Just pass on it.
All right, so I'll pass on that, no problem. Okay. So this is a discussion and vote to approve the agreement between Town of Freetown and Morgan Records Management for digitalizing, uh digitalization, sorry, of water and sewer and planning maps and plans. So it looks like close around, around twelve hundred dollars, I want to say.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly.
It's covered by a grant, too.
And it's covered by a grant, that's even better. Um, yeah, I think this is something we obviously need to do, hopefully this will free up some space potentially, or at least provide us, you know, uh some a backup, which if there's any kind of flood or anything of that nature, we'll have these there. Um so any questions from you, George?
Yeah.
I think, Debbie?
No.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve this contract.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we're gonna move down to agenda item eighteen. So this is discussion and vote to declare the following items as surplus, so this is a bunch of stuff that's down at the Highway Barn. And it includes three water hydrants, which are kind of cool, actually, I did see those. A hundred old water meters and some old metal tools. Um so they'd like to, like a permission to, you know, scrap this and um and authorize the Water and Sewer Commission staff to clean up the space at the Highway Highway Department as well. So this seems like a no-brainer. Any concerns here? All right, so I'll entertain a motion to um declare, yeah, design a surplus, um as well as clean out, so you made the motion, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Board of Health, um Jared is not here today, he's ill, so I will do Board of Health real quick. So this is um discussion and vote to approve the signed amendment, agreement and amendment between the Town of Freetown, the University of Massachusetts Chan Medical School for acquiring vaccines and billing services effective two one twenty-two through two one twenty-three. Okay.
Do I have an explanation of this?
Yeah, so um I think Lori had uh the town nurse had come in a few meetings ago that she's going to start administering some vaccines, and this company will do the billing to the health insurance agencies to collect for the administration, uh you know, to collect for the, for her administering the vaccines. She's gonna try to go to homebound people um and probably set something up with the COA as she moves forward. But she's just beginning this, but so this company, it's a contract with this company that they'll do the billing and and collecting for the vaccine.
Yeah, and this will be a revolving fund, so I think this is gonna pay for itself, right?
Right, that's what we talked about.
That's what we talked about, so.
Have we uh compared billing companies, billing company we use now for the ambulance runs? They've done a good job for us.
I I I don't know, this was presented to me from Lori.
Right, but you know, that's one company, I think it might be worthwhile to uh even put it out to bid, because these companies charge a percent, it amounts to a lot of money.
Yeah, we can talk to Lori about that and see uh, totally, you know, see what, see what she says to that, I mean, I don't know if this is a very specialized specialized kind of thing, if not, if it's something. No, yeah, I agree. But yeah, so it's uh talk to Lori, maybe ask her to come to the next meeting and 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 discuss this again, and then we can push that off to a different meeting. So then we have, next is Board of Parks Commission, so discussion and vote on the payment system to utilize at the boat ramp. So I looked at this.
What system are we talking about?
So this is for the, so people can buy tickets to go into the boat ramp, um using a kiosk.
Oh, so we're talking in kiosks?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, so now, one one thing I was a little confused on this one, and I don't know where it went, uh is this like, is this decision has been made to go with this particular company?
That's what you're making, so the first decision on this agenda is to decide if you want to go with a kiosk, because prior, you have voted to go with a, like a pay, a pay, a mobile payment app.
Yeah.
We don't have electricity or internet down there, right?
The kiosk will be self-sufficient, has solar and everything else.
Right, so we we as a committee feel like it's a better option, is the kiosk?
Yes.
So the first vote is, do you want to go with a kiosk versus, you know, mobile app?
I guess that was my question, is it specific, was it a specific kiosk, or was it the kiosk that's providing the packet that I saw?
So we, I mean, I, that kiosk that's providing your packet is the one that we liked the best, in terms of it, what it can do, and we also met with the representative out there today. Um and, you know, it's it's part of the MAPC collaborative contract, which means it's procured already, you know, it's ready to go.
Yeah.
Um the 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 one issue that we discussed was uh the cost of purchasing it outright versus leasing it. So once you, the board makes the decision that they want to go with a kiosk.
Yeah.
Um then we can discuss different options for financing and.
No, this isn't on the agenda, but if we're discussing kiosks, um would it be worthwhile to purchase two kiosks and have one for a transfer station? We've been talking about this for years.
So I can look into that further, George. Um I don't have it in any budget, I'd have to put it in the, you know, the next year's budget. Um, I don't have it in any budget, I'd have to put it in the gym, you know, the next year's budget. But I I can do that and bring it up to the board, uh, later date.
Okay, well, for this particular one, the boat ramp kiosk, I like the idea of going with the kiosk, I think it makes sense. We just, we discussed this last meeting as well, so I will entertain a motion to, um, approve. Payment, a kiosk as a payment system to utilize at the boat ramp.
Motion made.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
So now, discussion vote for Town Administrator to approve and sign documents regarding the kiosk at the boat ramp, so this is. I'm assuming to get through the, get this over the finish line?
Right, so it's.
Find efficiencies here.
Um, part of it is just the timing, right, we're trying to, we're trying to get ready for the season. Um, moving forward, so because the documents, I'm, you know, we're not meeting again until the eleventh, we thought it might just be easier. If I sign the documents, I I will, I'm not sure that we should have another, uh, gender item, another meeting for the lease. Option versus the purchase option.
License numbers.
I forget the, do you remember the lease numbers, Lilian?
Yeah, it's in the packet, the equipment cost is twelve thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and ninety-four cents.
How much is it, the lease payment per month, though?
Option one for thirty-six months would be four oh six twenty, if you did forty-eight months, it would be three seventeen ninety-three and at the end of both leases, it's. Um, end of each option to purchase it for a dollar.
So what happens?
Quote for the kiosk that we have right now is twelve thousand six hundred ninety seventeen.
Right, and so here, here's the thing, if we, we, we move forward with the twelve thousand six hundred ninety, we have the money in the revolving fund. We can transfer it over, however, it leaves our revolving fund with about eight thousand dollars. That revolving fund is what we use to operate the boat ramp, so that that money is what we we move into our general fund to pay for. Our salaries for the attendance, the police details, the portage on rental, the trash rental. So yes, we'll be collecting funds from parking that will go into the fund, but I'm concerned with taking out. The thirteen thousand or the twelve thousand six ninety and leaving too little. In the revolving fund to operate while we're, we're currently spending more than we're taking in, we're hoping that that levels itself off. But in the meantime, I think the lease option would be a much better option for the town.
The the only thing I would say about that is maybe clerically, so to speak, it might be a better option. But, uh, if we were to transfer out of the reserve fund, which could not be a problem, we have plenty of funds available. Uh, I think we'll save a lot of money in the long run, not leasing and purchasing. So maybe you can run the number.
Yeah, it's like two grand, we'd save two thousand that way.
Okay, but we don't.
Over over the three years.
Right now, we have about twenty thousand dollars in the revolving fund, so if I take thirteen thousand out, well, it will leave. Like seven, I think it's eight, actually, leave eight thousand dollars.
It's only two thousand over three years.
Seems like pretty favorable terms. And then it's back for one dollar at the end.
Now, it's including the the buyout option.
Yeah, the buyout option, so it's, so at the end of the lease says it's one dollar to buy it out.
Okay.
So I just took the the payments times thirty-six months and it came to fourteen thousand six hundred and sixteen.
So it costs us two thousand over three years.
Yeah, kind of, seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, um, now, we don't specifically have that agenda to vote on tonight, do we?
So it'd be voting on me signing agreements.
Okay, all right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve the town. Town Administrator to sign and approve documents regarding the kiosk at the boat ramp.
Motion made.
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I think I got everything, public hearings in ten minutes, um, so we'll go to recess for ten minutes and then have a public hearing. Why do you, I I haven't, why do you call a vote for that? I always forget. I don't think so, right?
Yes, you just.
Do, so I'd say a motion to go to recess for ten minutes and then come back to the public hearing. Do I have that motion?
Oh, sorry. Already out the door, uh, motion made.
All right, I think, uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so recess will be back in ten. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to, um, leave recess and come back into open session.
Gonna make that motion?
Oh.
Make that motion?
I have to be there?
Yeah, if you have to. All right, uh, second, all in favor? Aye. All right, so now we're, we want to the public hearing, um, I'm gonna read the public notice. Notice hereby given that N Star Electric, DBA, EverSource Energy request permission to locate poles, wires, cables. Fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guys and other such sustaining and protective features to be owned and used in common by your petitioners. Along and across the following public ways, way or ways, Ridge Hill Road. Uh, to replace one jointly owned pole on Ridge Hill Road opposite twenty, number twenty-four Alexander Way. Uh, southeast of existing pole eighty-nine, uh, dash point zero five to support the installation of additional electric supply equipment. Necessity for this is pole placement to support the installation, excuse me, of additional electric company equipment. Wherefore, they pray that the, that do notice and hearing as provided by law, they be granted joint or identical locations. For and permission to erect fixtures as they may be fixed, find necessary, said poles to be erected substantially. In accordance with the plan filed here with, uh, here with marked V Z N E Inc., Plan, uh, number M A two zero two two dash seven four. Dated February fourth, twenty twenty-two, also for permission to lay and maintain underground. Laterals, cables and wires in the above intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings. As each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes, your petitioners agree that spare. Uh, space shall be reserved and maintained for the limited purpose of attaching one-way low voltage. Low voltage fire and police signaling wires owned by municipality or governmental entity for public safety purposes only. A hearing to consider the above will be held on Monday, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. At the police station, community room, fifteen Memorial Drive, East Free Town, Massachusetts. Boom.
Say it again.
All right, so now, uh, I'll open the public hearing, I guess I'll entertain a motion, open the public hearing.
Awesome, man.
Second that, all in favor? Aye. Okay, are you from EverSource?
From Verizon.
Verizon, close enough, wanna just say your name, you can come up just to the.
Stop to the front?
Yeah, just kind of.
Oh, you're from Verizon, that's right, man?
Yeah, well, it's Verizon and EverSource, they're together.
Okay. Sure, uh, name's Ross Billy, representing Verizon, New England. Um, Verizon will set this poll because it's on the Verizon maintained side of town.
Okay.
So EverSource asked us to set this poll, so that's why we have to go to the hearing because we're the ones setting it.
Gotcha.
Like you said, it's just for their, we could be upgrading some kind of electrical equipment or something like that, I know it's. It's a couple of businesses right there, somebody could be getting a new upgraded service or something like that, so we need to place new equipment to accommodate.
Yeah, all right, great, and I know, I mean, it's probably related to the, all the other EverSource stuff they've been doing as well, um, but yeah, I mean, this doesn't seem to be. That invasive, right?
I'm just, so there, so in the application, it just says also for permission to lay and maintain underground. Laterals, cables and wires in the above intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles. So my concern is, are they digging up? The road to 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 put underground electric to somewhere, I don't know, it doesn't really give you a specific thing. Um, am I reading that correctly?
You're reading that correctly, but it's my understanding that they're not putting any underground in, this just covers them if. Uh, a customer goes in and they need to run an underground pipe to service a building or something. This just covers that pipe and the pole to that. So I think they write that in on every. Petition across, across the state.
That's right. What you got there, Deb, is that the, uh, where it's gonna go?
Yeah, this is the little map, so this is the new pole, this is, you know, self-mean, particularly, this is Alexander.
So, yeah. So it's just, I think it's moving a pole, that's all, right?
It's adding a pole?
I think it's moving it, is this saying, or maybe it's adding?
It's adding a pole.
It's adding a pole, so this is Alexander, so this is Alexander Drive, Main Street, existing pole is there and there, they're putting one in the middle.
That's good.
Okay.
I'm okay with the pole.
All right, cool, uh, so I'll entertain a motion, well, should I close the public hearing first before I vote?
Yeah, if there's a little more, um, public information.
No one's. Carlos, anything?
Lot of interest.
All right, do we have anything? Yep, I do, all right, so, uh, with that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made.
Second that, all in favor? Aye, so now, uh, vote to approve or deny the request from EverSource. Energy to locate poles, wires, cables and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guys and other such as saving and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common. By your petitioners along and across Ridge Hill Road, describing public hearing notice, so I'll I'll entertain a motion to approve this.
Awesome, man.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I think that is everything, as George, like I say, thank you very much for your time on the board, it's been a pleasure working with you. I'm sure I'll see you around at the country club, most likely.
That's right.
Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, from, from my heart, really appreciate everything you've done for this town and, um, thank you very much.
Did you play the ASR in there?
Not today, too cold. Yeah, 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 I did. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.